Let's go.
All right, I'm out of here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
All right.
Mr. McGee.
Put on the camera, action. Take one. All right.
To your 7:30?
7:30. We're continuing the road till December 9th?
Well, so the next meeting, and if you want the next meeting on December 12th?
12th. Is 12th good for everybody? One meeting in December?
December 12th.
Yeah. Good. Okay.
So we have the request to continue the ADA road from Alex Vera, the attorney for...
And they'll be through their court thing by that time, so we won't be an issue?
That's the idea. Chris thought that was a good idea, too.
Are you raising your hand for that?
No.
Did we have, did we say December 12th? Because I wrote down, I had planning board December 5th and 19th.
Yeah, that's what I had originally.
That's what we had before. And then last week you asked that we leave all of them open, so rather than meet three times, how about once?
Right.
Does that work?
If it works, regular schedule works.
12th works to me.
And you want more than one meeting? Didn't think so. I think this is for you.
Did you achieve everything that we need to?
This request last week.
We can be out of here by like, huh? How to drink some?
So you need a motion to continue?
Um, saying this is ADA road until December 12th and December. You want to take it on second? All in favor?
Aye.
12th, and I'll put that right at 7:30 to get those done.
Get them in.
So you got mail, bills?
Yep, bills and payrolls right here. All the extra mail, I put in your packets. It was the budget information again. Minutes from November 21st.
This is quite...
That's not November 21st.
Okay, that's why I'm looking at the document. Thank you, minutes from November 7th.
Yeah, they look fine with their pleasure reading as always.
So, I mean, man, there's lots.
Really? We can't talk about that yet.
Well, I just don't understand the method.
So any revisions or corrections on the minutes from November 7th?
No, they seem fine for me.
A little approval?
A little second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, there's always mine.
Yeah, it's very nice to read them. I really, it's nice to recap previously.
Anything else? Is that's it?
Um, village Reed Meadow.
Okay.
I have a handout for you.
Is that all good?
Well, that's why James is here. He's gonna play the big bad grin, you know?
No, actually, Jim was pretty happy. We have the request from Mr. Barbador to release most of the bond for Reed Lane. Jim found three minor things, that's what's in the email. Bonds, updated bond information. And then one more update since I did the spreadsheet. And I do now have this bond certification. Some bonds are in place, so I just sent them all out.
Now, you, 36, 744?
Engineering, A, the 4,800 and the there can be added to the release.
Does this have anything to do with the two houses that are still going on on the street?
No, that's a separate, there's a separate bond for the road.
Okay. So 36 plus 4,800 more? Is that what you just said?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do I have to give them that?
Mm-hmm.
41, 534.
I was getting that.
Okay, and then plus interest equity today.
What?
Plus interest equity today.
All right. Do we have the interest in a separate account or we just...
Does this clean the account out?
With the same account.
Does this settle and clean the account out?
No, it doesn't.
There's still some holdback.
Do you need the interest? Can we leave the interest in with what you got left? Do you want the interest with, let's do now, so we don't have to do the math, or you know the math?
We don't know the math on the interest. The treasurer would do that. We're keeping the contingency, the entire contingency, and then the, as built, and then the few smaller items.
All right, so I'll entertain the motion to approve 41,544 plus interest for the bond release for Reed Meadow subject to the three items that James has raised up, and the contingency.
So it's 41,000. What does that leave?
That leaves 12,000 and some change.
So it's moved?
So moved?
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I do, if you could give me one minute, I have something I'd like to propose regarding that. Jim pointed out to me that I missed a manhole, and I did. And I put the finished pavement in. This manhole is nothing but where two pipes change direction, and what I'm gonna propose here, it might sound a little strange, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. Keep in mind, Reed Lane is a private road. We've just put brand new paving down. I was speaking to Jim earlier, and he may agree or disagree with me about this, but that that manhole might never have to be opened. That manhole at the earliest case would be 10 to 12 years before it would have to be open for some kind of a maintenance, because it's the storm drains that need to be cleaned out periodically, not the manholes. I was wondering if the board would consider that I give the homeowners association the money, they give me a letter saying, all 12 of the people who own land there, that they're aware of this, they understand it, and when they go to do some pavement work in the future, they will have that put in, so I don't have to go cut a new road to put a cover in that won't be accessed for 10 or 12 years right now. I know it's a little strange request, but I'll do either whatever you want, but I'm just saying that it just doesn't make sense to cut that pavement and to do this manhole cover that's never gonna be open, so...
There's a homeowners association?
There's an association, and I, what I would do is I'd get a letter from all 12 of the people in the village, you know, signing that they are fine with this idea and that the money will be held in the homeowners association account.
In escrow.
Yeah, in escrow. I would place a magnum in the dead center point in the road where that is located, and then if, just seems a shame to cut that pavement, you know, and it's a small road.
There is a manhole there now, right?
There is a manhole there now. It's just the covering and everything hasn't been raised to the finished pavement.
So how far above the pavement, below pavement is the manhole? Couple inches?
Maybe eight tenths. Well, it's, there's some gravel over the top. We processed the gravel and we put it all together. Then we came and cut them out later before I did the final pavement, and being a dummy, I didn't look at the plan. I just knew where the other ones that collect them from the catch basins.
I think, all right, I'll make it easy. I wouldn't have proved that. I want you to do it now.
Okay.
Please get forgotten. That's my opinion.
It is a private drive that the town's not gonna own, so, but I, yeah, I'm okay with it. I'll probably do it next spring, just 'cause I don't wanna do it in this winter season, but, you know.
Yeah, it's a really good time.
Okay.
I think it makes a good point, it'll probably never get done.
Yeah, and it probably will never be accessed in the whole life of the road anyways, but I agree, it was my mistake.
But homeowners associations often don't follow through with things.
They'll be lucky if they clean out the catch basins.
Well, I know they will, but it won't, because all they do, I'm still living there, they ask me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, what else?
Just wanted you to know what the comments are.
Minutes. All right, what's the status of the lot 4 and 5 Chestnut Lane? This is the one where they...
Yeah, trees here for that.
Cut down all the trees like you weren't supposed to do? And what do you wanna tell us?
No, it was a different owner. It's supposed to be a...
Keeps on changing.
Maybe it'll make you put palm trees back instead of...
These are pictures. I didn't know, couldn't print them. You kidding me? No. That's... Yeah, we can pass that around.
I'll get a tablet.
They wiped and cleaned.
Why? Oh, he told me. You know, definitely clear cut.
Definitely clear cut. Okay, so, background on this, this gentleman purchased both of these lots, okay? He told me that he was gonna go up there and he was clearing the areas for the houses in the septic systems. I went up there and stopped them after they had cut this 11.8 acres clear cut. I went up to just check on progress in one day, and these guys were up there and they were cutting everything. I stopped them immediately. I told them, you know, the logger guys, they couldn't do this stuff, and I was absolutely mortified. I tried to talk to the homeowners. He didn't wanna have anything to do with me. The reason why I'm here tonight is because he finally, his wife finally agreed that something needed to be done after they got a letter of basically, stop, don't do anything else, you're... He lives in Florida, and this gentleman thinks that he could just kinda do whatever he pleased up there. So he had this master plan in his mind, and he wanted to clear right down to the wetlands, right down to the wetlands. I stopped them 150 feet from the wetlands. This is the wetland line here.
Is it 150?
It's 150. It's 100, it's 100-foot buffer. I stopped them at 150, but he wanted to keep going all the way down and clear it right down to here, which is absolutely, after I found, once I found this out. I refused to do anything further for him. I told him to stop work up there, and then that's when Roland got involved and wrote a letter and stating, you know, this has to be done, this has to be done, you guys gotta stop. They were actually started removing the stumps at the top of the hill, and that was stopped. So at this point, there's a lot of sucker growth that's growing back in, and there's a lot of undulations, and if you can see in the pictures, there's some rock separation that kinda, on the side.
You get to keep these, right?
Yeah, they're free, yeah.
Me.
That's on this, right?
What's he gonna do to remediate it?
Right now, we have a double roll of hay bales. This is that dash line here and here.
You need more than that.
You look at the swap...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I agree 100%. Just to get him to do that to this point has been like pulling teeth with this guy. He finally realized about two weeks ago that it was serious.
It's about 100-foot drop in elevation.
Now, does he own both those lots?
He owns both of the lots.
They're in his name now, right?
They are in his name.
Hasn't put a code from the front yet, though, has he?
No, he can't.
He's got the C P S.
So we're not gonna do anything until he tells us what he's, well, he has to, other than stabilize it?
What I told him, the immediate thing, what my concern was, is one of the steep parts down here, I had him put the double roll of hay bales, because that was my immediate concern. Walked the rest of the site, there's lots of dips and undulations and stuff to slow down some of the snow melt and stuff through the winter, but before the winter came and the ground froze, I was adamant that he got that stuff done.
Has he done anything else?
I didn't, I didn't make any of these recommendations until I was prepaid, because he didn't, it's a long story, but he basically thought that engineers were...
No, he's not finding the other one?
He's finding out the hard way.
He's not finding the lot that's beside it, is he?
This one right here?
Yeah.
Nope, that one's being built on a private owner. That one's got a tree buffer around it. They just cleared what they needed to clear here. My conversations with them, they made an appointment to come up, they flew up from Florida, they went to Boston for some doctor's appointment, and then flew back and didn't show up at the meeting with me, so...
So why don't we send them a letter that unless we...
You're gonna have to send them another letter.
No, 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 we're gonna send them a letter that unless we get some sort of response from them as to what they're gonna do to rectify the situation out there, we're going to, we're gonna stop proceedings to rescind the two lots.
Yeah.
Are they in violation of their, of this, of their permit, the subdivision?
Yeah, in violation of the sheer residential driveway special permit at a minimum.
And they cleared the slope coming down towards the common driveway, which means now all that water that wasn't accounted for in the drainage is all coming down.
Why don't we send them a letter that we have a meeting on the 12th of December, we'd like to...
I told them there's gonna be lots of detention basins out there, there's gonna be lots of terraces out there, there's gonna be some replanting that goes on.
He's gonna have...
It's not gonna be cheap.
He's gonna have massive replanting.
We're gonna put it, we'll put it on the agenda for the 12th. If you can get mine, contact information that you have, and we'll send them a letter that he or a representative should show, but we're gonna start rescinding the, those two lots in the subdivision.
This is one of our most ecologically sensitive areas, too.
Anyway, okay, so we'll...
I'm right, I'm right there with you. I'm just here because they begged me to come.
Meeting on the 12th, if you could have a representative...
See what you guys wanted. I know what you guys want. I know, I know what needs to be done, but...
It was good to put the hay bales in.
I'm not doing anything until I get, yeah. It's all about economics.
You can have a drill that's right in the spring.
Yeah, it's, it's just...
I've asked him for a build-out plan of what he wants to do, probably 10 times.
Was there a reason for him clear cutting it?
What's that?
What was the theory, what was the reason for?
Oh, 'cause he's gonna have this grand horse property up there with paddocks and stables and horse barn, and he didn't ask anybody if that was okay, but that was his vision, and he's seen this property once. I don't even think he's seen it since it's been, this is now...
Where would you have been permitted to cut, had he...
We would've had to come in and have discussions, we would've had to come in and have done drainage. He still needs to file with the EPA at this point, because he's cut so much land, he still needs the EPA permit, which they're gonna...
Kill him.
Yeah, there's probably gonna be some fines associated with that.
Yeah.
And it's just a perfect example of, what do you know? Do what I want.
On the septic plan, there was areas that were shown...
Oh, yeah?
Development areas, and it said no clearing outside of those.
Right, all right, so we'll pick up the ball from there.
All right.
Send them a nice letter.
Nice one.
Somebody just did that.
So, Jim, you'll send me one of those?
I'll send you all the photos. I just, there was something wrong with my...
And information, right?
I figured I'd break technology.
That's just great.
Did he respond to your regular email or just...
I've never spoken to him. I've spoken to him once, and I was beside myself, so I've had communication with his wife a couple of times, but there's a liaison.
What did yourself say to you while you were standing next to yourself?
Don't do this, don't do this.
Should we set it certified? That's my question.
Yes. Oh, yeah. It's a...
Well, thank you.
All right, jumping right into the next one.
We have a 750 A and R for Howard Ave, lots 2A and 28, 268.
Don't forget to go back to the complete streets one.
Oh, yeah, that's right, let's do that first, right? While we're still kind of on the road business. All right, the complete streets ones, yeah, we're gonna take care of that.
Yeah, apologize for a whole bunch of new information. This was in today's email, but...
Uh-huh. Then they got that letter, and it's like, what do I do? I said, you're hiring me money, prepaid everything I do from here on in. All right, but I don't, I don't give...
Remember we talked about getting a...
Thank you.
Getting on the complete streets policy, and Magic is gonna, actually they're gonna do it for us, correct?
They have drafted this policy, and to move the process forward, what we're hoping for is that you'll vote to recommend that this look, when they adopt the policy.
There's somebody, Mike, do you wanna explain what this complete streets policy is for the public?
Could you also explain what the difference is of what we just received versus what was in the packet, because there are documents, and some of them I think probably haven't changed.
Same stuff that I emailed to you.
Right. Cover sheet's different, because it's new, right? And is our draft different than what we received in the packet that proposed Walton?
No, it's just the same.
And the Maynard and Plymouth ones are the same?
Maynard and Plymouth, yes, yeah.
So the only thing is truly different?
That's just a hard copy of what I emailed you earlier.
Oh, that's right, that was emailed, okay. So the only thing really different is this cover sheet.
I can do an abbreviated edition.
Go ahead, give him the Reader's Digest version.
This complete streets policy that we're being, we're being asked by the selectmen to look at, is a policy that certain towns and cities put in place to, to ensure that the streets in the town are not just for use for cars, they're used for bicycle, walking, all uses, older population, people with disabilities, makes sure the streets are safe, comfortable, convenient, and accessible, and the streets are designed to be context-sensitive. So it includes rights, rights of way where you need to, to get to those goals. So it's a, basically, it's a policy that's, that would be, if we approve it, would be to ensure that any streets that we have right now, any streets modifications going forward, would be very pedestrian and accessible for the public.
And also includes bicycles and frontage.
Exactly, yep. They included certain, some pictures. I don't know if you can see these, but we could, we could probably get these online, or, once this goes to the supplement, I'm sure that Keith will have these photos online. And one example is you have the main street down a small town, but you have bicycle lanes on that street as well. So that's the kind of thing they're talking about, trees.
So the only comment I would make on this, you should consider what the incremental cost is every time we redo a road, if you don't incorporate this, or if you try to incorporate it.
Well, the...
Because that would, that would imply that, let's say next year, new estate's up, right? That would imply that you're gonna put a sidewalk down, handicap access, crossing, and perhaps a strike bike lane.
No, it would imply that you'll look at doing that, and then you have two outs. One is if it's not appropriate to put it there, and the other one is it's not feasible to put it in there, either for economics or for impact.
But we have to document, and they would have to, they have to evidence, otherwise we wouldn't be eligible for additional publishing.
But it says when you can't do it, you have to find an alternative route for it.
And we could also start talking about sidewalk funds like we used to do years ago, start asking for, as we do developments, asking for more money to start funding sidewalks, so that we would have a key to start making the streets better, too.
See, if we pass this policy, it opens us up to Chapter 90 funds, which are basically state and federal grants to help improve the streets.
Jimmy, what do you think of that?
It's a little bit hard for us during redevelopment, but redevelopment is easier. And we tried to put it in the context of looking at the Shova Road and the rest of the former sidewalk, and what was the impact to put a sidewalk on the Shova, and the impact for it might be severe for the sidewalk, so we're starting to hear that.
Okay.
And then looking at it partly as a funding source, that there's gonna be some state fund available potentially to do that.
Exactly.
So we don't get any divided in the program?
But it's a good approach in general, even trying to rectify it. I mean, you view it through a filter, if you can't do it, you can't do it, but it does make sense, and it includes a number of things, so, I mean, it seems positive overall.
I think part of what happens if you adopt that, you're gonna have to change the subdivision regulations, so you have to, you have to...
Right, and it says the committee will get formed to review, so, yeah, it's all dealt upon you.
It's a good place to start, let's get that. Like I said, like, in the old days, we used to try to squirrel some money aside, especially on developments that didn't need sidewalks, that didn't make sense. Maybe this is a good way to get started with that again, too.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Okay, I move that we support, I...
I had some questions. I'm just sort of curious, so it talks about interstate freeways, it sounds more like California speak, and I see the Plymouth one has it. Is it just a template that people use? I know it's been modified, but, yeah, I was just sort of surprised when they talked about interstate freeways. Any insight on that?
It's just the point that if, if the area is not conducive to, or having pedestrians like limited access highways, then you're not gonna try to put them there.
Right, in New England speak and limited access highways, I'm just curious.
Right, it is nationwide, so...
Will you be taking comments on that from us?
Right now?
Selectmen would be one.
I guess it'd be good to review the material before we, you know, start making comments. I do have a comment to make on it, but...
Name, please.
My name is Ray Johnson, 26 Oak Hill. I see a lot of people using Oak Hill Road largely on Saturdays and Sundays for recreation, and I'm, I wanna say I'm very much for that. We have people walking, running, roller skiing, bicycling. These are really good uses, but it is a very narrow road, and it's more than just sidewalks that you guys are looking at here. At least, I'd like to think that it is. I don't know what the state has to say on that.
It's...
But, but it's all about, you know, making the roads, you know, safer for use other than just cars, you know? If it's wide enough for two cars, but nothing else, you know, that's not very safe, and not very conducive for other usage. So I would say put yourselves in the positions of a pedestrian, of a roller skier, if you're so inclined, or a bicyclist, and, and ask yourself, would you wanna be on a road around here? I think it's a good, it sounds like a good thing, but I think the details are always interesting.
Well, and it's actually serve, yeah, motherhood and apple pie, it says for all users of all ages, so it is really very inclusive, and here's an M A P C description, which probably addresses most of it. It includes, yeah, absolutely, it includes what you're expressing interest in.
We need to pass this on to the selectmen, to the board.
Don't you pass this around, the audience...
Yes, yeah, it's a good positive thing.
And then, public hearing on it, and let me put it this way, Oak Hill's not gonna get fixed unless we get money from somewhere else to widen and everything else like that.
And the selectmen have another say, so they have a chance to review it.
Anyone else have anything they wanna speak on this?
I would move that we recommend to the selectmen that they adopt their policy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You'll be happy when you read that.
Okay, so now we're, now on schedule. We have a 750 A and R Howard Ave, two lots, 2A and 280, 268 Howard Ave. We're taking this parcel, dividing into two lots. One lot's gonna be 4,000 per feet, the other one 4,300 plus. What do you have for dry land of these?
The up ones.
36 there.
36.
Not that it's our jurisdiction, but which one's the one that's been cleared?
Neither of these two. It's this one back there.
Oh, these have nothing to do with it.
This has the clearing to here, which I had permission to do. My hay bales, I met with Ponce Com on Monday, hay bales are all in at this point, they've released the order.
All right, tell you what, you have confirmation?
I am.
Is anybody here for this?
This is Harwood?
Harwood, yes.
There's the locust man.
Right at the corner.
Yeah.
This is where that pond is, right? One that freezes in the winter?
No.
No, this is near where the Christmas tree is.
This is the other one.
The other one.
Oh, this is one of the hotter ones.
This is a wetlands back there.
This is a wetland, it's back there. The road is, Harwood's here.
Right.
This was just clear cut over here?
Miller's house is up in this corner or something like that. Brad Miller's.
Heard the name, I don't know where exactly.
Clady is further up on.
Yeah, Clady is further up.
Just right where the T is in Newtown.
I know Moran's son is across the way.
Do you have any questions about it?
What's that?
To the top of the hill.
Yeah, this is actually downable. From that four.
They're both full fronted lots, right? Is this right?
Yeah.
You've already cleared some of this already?
There is, yeah. So basically, I've gone to conservation, because I have the lot behind it as well. So technically, I have three lots here. One was already in existence back in the 70s. That's not Doyle here. So it goes at an angle down here, which has 200 feet of frontage.
On Harwood?
On Harwood, yes. So that, this, this lot here, I currently own now, and it's lot, it's number 268 Harwood. So this, it's not on this, it has nothing to do with these two lots here.
Did Norton do the clearing here?
He did.
These haven't been cleared.
These aren't there, no. But the way we really can-
I'll tell you, I don't have any issue with this. I'd move approval.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. Full fronted is a lot.
Yeah, I think it's.
All right, I'll move second. All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to sign this?
You have.
All right. Daddy, have a mile on, are we signing a mile on?
Yeah.
You do.
Justin, a mile on? Should we just sign a mile on?
He's signed two copies.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then Russ, he gave me a PDF.
So he's gonna-
It's on the top there.
He's gonna make copies and send it back, getting mine to sign paper.
If you'd sign two papers, that's gonna be great. And he's also gonna send me a PDF.
What's the date, 20?
21.
Yeah. This one. Still.
This is the Wickham, the Sanderson.
All right, so this is, we have a preliminary subdivision, Sanderson Road, Madison property, Wickham Ave, Sanderson Road.
I'm going to up Paul Alton, our representative of the trust, and Sanderson with Jeff Graham from Myers and Brink Corporation. And he sets up the plan, refresh your memory, when we were here a couple of weeks ago, we submitted a preliminary plan voluntarily and gave notice to the abutters voluntarily, so that when we reached the point of putting together a definitive subdivision plan, we had the input from the board and some of the abutters, so that we wouldn't spend millions or thousands of dollars on engineering, and then find that we had to redo the definitive plan. Thankfully, at the last meeting, there were a lot of comments. Also thankfully, the comments didn't all correspond to one another. There was, there were some overlapping issues. We primarily were concerned with the comments from Savos Davos, that the density had to be reduced for the cluster plan, that based upon calculations that he had performed, there were too many lots in the cluster plan, notwithstanding that the way it had been designed, we intended it to meet the requirements of the cluster bylaw. There were also concerns from the abutter, some of the abutters regarding the proximity of their homes to new homes in rows which were being constructed. There were concerns regarding the access that wildlife would have to the land. There was concerns regarding preserving the ester and the center of the project. And there were also concerns about the ability of the cluster plan to be constructed, because the sewer lines would cross the public ways, which we would hope someday would be accepted by town meeting in public ways. And the town has had some resistance to, to doing that. So what we did is we took all of the comments we had and brought them back, and Jeff has redesigned the project, and we couldn't meet everybody's objectives. We saw the comments that had been submitted to the board by email and by others. There was one comment where they wanted the land to remain exactly the way that it is today, and it can remain that way if somebody were to pay our client the fair market value for the property, but, but other than that, our, this is our client's retirement and bank account, and they would like to make a withdrawal. And as we all would, from whatever investments we have. So we're trying to find a balance between what we can, what we can build in accordance of the bylaw, and what we can do to preserve the property and provide trails and open space. And I think, as you will see, Jeff has done an unusually extraordinary job in addressing these concerns. So now that he's set up, I can stop talking, and he will take the presentation.
Thank you. And could you just clarify, the owner, there are actually two owners, or is David Sanderson individually?
There are, there are multiple trustees of the trust, multiple beneficiaries, so there's quite a few owners of the property, there's a trust and there's one individual. But the trust, the trust represents a handful of families.
Okay, at what point, it says co-trustees of three, but it's more of them at now?
Well, those are trustees. Trustees aren't the people who are necessarily the beneficiaries of a trust. Beneficiaries aren't their matter of record.
Right.
But those are, the trustees are the people who make decisions, who hold the property for the benefit of the beneficiaries.
And there's one individual as well?
And there's one individual who also is a co-owner with the trust.
Of all, all plots?
That's correct.
Right, okay, just trying to clarify.
Yep.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Just to refresh your memory, this is the plan that we came in with last time. I won't go over it again, you all have, have it. And by the way, this is the new one, so I figured I'd face you with that as I talk. So with all the comments that Paul, that we received, that Paul went over, I went back to the drawing board and developed this plan. Now, the key components of, and this is the same plan, the key components were to, I mean, I don't know where to start, we had so many of them. One of the things was to maintain the trails that exist. Here's one of the major trails that exists right through here, and that will bring you back out to Oak Hill Road. Another, at the very end, we talked a lot about wildlife corridors, you know, we have an east-west sort of corridor, and we wanted something going southerly. So that was one of the key components. Some of the neighbors in this area had a lot of lots behind them. Right here, you see all these lots here, and they would like that were, to be less condensed.
Can you face the audience a little?
We have this.
Okay, good.
We brought one over there, too, so everybody can see. We had, the number of lots was a critical issue that had various impacts. Let's start with the first one, which is the septic issue, the nitrogen load onto the wells across the street, as well as, you know, on that issue, we had a large, we had six lots with a septic system kind of close to those wells as well, that was a concern. We had talked about doing nitrogen studies. Savos ran some numbers indicating this was about 30% more than he wanted with the number of lots. So I need to, I'm gonna explain this in the best way I can. There was 40 lots here, where we could have had 43 in my calculations, and we debated whether one of the lots was on the, on the conventional plan. And at the hour factor, it did. But anyway, that was 43, we were proposing 40. But part of that 40, I'm gonna ask you to think about, this lot here, A&R lot, and this lot were not included in the 40. We originally had all the A&R lots included, and then staff and you asked us to take them off, because it was confusing. So there were four A&R lots not included in this calculation. So if you take these 40, forget these two, because they're being built and sold right now, and these two, that's 42 on this plan. This plan here is now 32. And that's the number we're trying to get to, somewhere around the 30, 32 number. So those are all the key ingredients, how do we get there? So what I did is, and if you remember our conversation also, and I ran some numbers for the Sandersons, the economics is a big driving factor, because on the cluster, as I said before, most of the times, when you do a cluster, you reduce the required roadway that you would have to build on a conventional. In this case, it was backwards. The conventional was significantly less, 1,800 feet of roadway versus 2,700 feet in the convent, on the cluster. So I went back to that concept, that theory of not building roads. Nobody wants roads, you don't want to maintain them, we don't necessarily, and you have all this road frontage. So it, basically, I'm starting to use the road frontage, that was a key component of this plan. So basically, I put these lots on the existing road frontage. But if you remember before, we had all these lots here, it's eight and six, 14 lots, and I kept a strip along the frontage, and there were two curb cuts. So this plan, four curb cuts, two regular roads, and then two common driveways. But I'm also gonna keep a strip right here, so that you still have the woods feel that you would have normally. Added some four A&R lots here on Sanderson Road, that's in the field. That was a concern before I did this, is make sure that the Sanderson family member that lives in this house was okay with it, he is okay with it. So there are four regular A&R lots here. And then these two, and then this one I also have, so there's a total of five, Sanderson and Wickham. If you recall, this is the exit of this drainage system, and there's a swale, a kind of dugout channel, I believe it's dugout, the Conservation Commission and us. Probably, this was, maybe somebody here knows, some kind of cranberry bog of some sort, because there's a dam, a dilapidated dam here, and the flow is here, and it's clearly a dug channel. But Conservation Commission obviously wanted to protect that. And if you look on this plan here, I had an A&R lot right, right next to that channel, and then lots all along it, so I was really impinging on that. And so this plan here, I took that A&R lot off completely. So now, this is all woods on this side, this is woods along the slope, and then this is the field. So the look of the stream and the protection of the stream for wildlife and everything else would still be there, because we would have the woods that is currently there now. I have a trail through there, but that's just a trail through the woods. That also gives you that north-south movement that you were looking for, that kind of heads over the wellfields and a lot of open space in that area. The neighbors had some issues with the houses here, so I put a lot of open space here, and I didn't use this road going throughout, like we talked about before. That's all open space as well, really increase the open space in this direction. That leaves the bulk of the project, and instead of having 40 lots throughout, this is only 19 lots. And to get to the 19 lots, according to the bylaw, this is the conventional plan, it's pretty much the same roadway. There are 13 lots in here, and four A&R lots. One, two, this one here, one, two, three, four, three, one, two, three, four. So there's four A&R lots, I'm, by your regulations, you can grant a doubling of that, that would give me eight plus 13 is 21, we're only using 19. So we're giving two back. So we're just, basically, if there's four lots, we're only using the bonus on two of them.
But you add everything else, so why would we give you the bonus in the first place? The reason we give you the bonus is if you don't add out the lots.
Right, and we, and what we've done is, let's take these two right here, we're providing, this is 100% open space, we're not just moving it back, we're providing 100% of the open space there.
Go ahead. Let me, I'll go first. You didn't listen to what we had to say, all you did now is take the, try to take the A&Rs out of the conversation, we're gonna build all of these. This is the, this is the crux of it right here, you have 19 lots, and if you look at the A&R plan that you spoke of before, you only have 17 lots in there, so you're already two over that. None of us are gonna give you any bonus density, because you're A&R and everything. You're leaving this one little spot where the, where Conservation said, there's a wetland issue, so we're not gonna build it. We're not gaining anything from this.
But we also have this one over here.
Well, that's because the guy who owns it wants his own buffer.
No, I asked him, he doesn't care, is what I said.
So it's still one, the point we were trying to get is, we wanted something that preserved open space, but didn't try to maximize it. You're still at 34 lots there. Savos has said 26 is about all that that property could handle.
First of all, we're at 32.
You're at 32, and 26 is above what we talked about, is that whole area being able to support.
I got Savos' letter, he said 33.
26. He did the density, keep you under 10, was at 26, and he did it for us. What about Savos for this one?
I don't think that's accurate.
Anyway, we talked about 26 lots out there.
We came out of that last meeting with a number of around 30 is what we-
That's what you were, we talked about 26.
But in any of the case, this plan meets Savos' criteria of 6 gallons per thousand.
That's if you separate the A&R, all the lots out, because then we don't have to calculate those.
No, with, if you add all the A&Rs, the whole property, to 6 gallons per thousand, this meets Savos' criteria, within a couple hundred gallons, which is real close, 200 gallons.
So, did you want to speak to what Savos-
I've been pregassed, water commissioner. I don't believe there was anything in that letter that signified a number of what would And we just got this plan two days ago, Savos hasn't had any time to look at numbers. I think we're jumping the gun here, because we're speculating, okay? We would do the engineering and see what works and what doesn't work. So I caution going over there.
Well, I had Savos run it for the last meeting, and 26 kept us under 10.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, it's-
That's, that's what, that's what, that's what we came out in a minute. So we'd all talked about 26. I still don't think it accomplishes what we're trying to do there. By A&R and all the land, and then putting one little cluster in for an open space plan, I still don't think it does what everybody, and you see there's a fair amount of people at this meeting, I think it's probably important to, to probably most of the residents who live up there. Our goal was to try to get the lots down, not maximize 32, try to get down to a number everyone can live with, and we could talk about the A&R lots. You've just taken every single square foot-
So I guess, Mark, why wouldn't we just do this plan then, right here? This is a simple plan, it's got 32 lots on it, 30 lots on it.
Because, because we, the town of Littleton has decided that we'd rather see open space plan, but we want to see something that makes sense.
So this is a bonus of two, not 34, 15 like this one.
No, it is, if you're asking for a double density and everything.
Of two lots, that's it, two lots. And this, I'm telling you, with, by two, except for 200 gallons, this meets the 6 gallons per thousand, and also doesn't even apply for this project, because we're doing individual lots.
Yeah, but as a-
Mark, I don't kind of agree with you.
As an open space plan, we can ask that all the A&R lots be included in the open space plan, like you did, at cops.
I have an idea that will maybe go someplace in the middle here. I think you've got too many lots in, with 32 myself, I think there's too much density, but-
Based on what?
Yeah. Give them a reason why.
Based on the fact that this is, this is one of the most highly ecological areas we have in town. To the, to the north, you have, to the north, you have Oak Hill Road, to the south, you have the lowlands. Animals move north and south all year long, that, that area has every kind of species of animal pass through it that the town has, from bobcats to deer, and deer. We, if you block that north-to-south route, you're gonna, you're gonna absolutely destroy the ecological balance in that area. But I have a suggestion for you, and it's not gonna be one that you'll, you'll like too too much. Now, if you, if you take, first of all, eliminate all these eight lots. By doing that, you've created a north-south movement. Now, I would go along with putting this cluster back in this corner, which gives you those eight lots, but then it leaves this, this, most of this area, well, all of this area, back as open space. So there's your eight lots for that area, but you cluster them up in the corner, and you leave in this whole corridor then, as a north-south. Now, you've got a big space here, and a big space here, I would say eliminate- And you leave in this whole corridor then, as a north-south. Now, you've got a big space here, and a big space here, I would say eliminate, I was going to ask you to eliminate this lot and these four lots. You could regain two of those lots there, so now you're only down three lots.
The slopes here, that's why, very steep slopes.
Yeah, well, you know.
It's also a right-of-way through that area.
Yeah, gee, there's a right-of-way right here. Between the slopes and the right-of-way, that, that's why, that's there and that's there.
Well, you could, you could, you could work with that, though. I think that there should be, these four houses should not be here, because that's, that's migratory direction of our wildlife. Again, one of the most ecologically sensitive places we have in town. It would be destroyed if we did it. So that's, that's my suggestion, is come back with the cluster in the top right-hand corner.
I appreciate that, but I don't understand why you wouldn't think that our clients would opt for this plan. This is more economical for them anyway, so why would.
It's all about economics.
I know, but that's what our clients have, they have a fiduciary obligation to their people, their trust, their beneficiaries, to do a plan that made technically, this is a perfectly fine plan. Why wouldn't they do this?
Because we told them not to. Our, our bylaw says that we get to choose whether you do a conventional or an open space plan. Now, we're saying, we want to see an open space plan, we want to see something that makes sense for the town, for the people that live there, and for all the, it's a very sensitive area, it has a lot of attribute, attributes that people want to preserve, the open space, the wetlands that are in there, the animals that are in there.
And we're trying to do that with this plan. And the only difference between this plan and this plan, the number of units is two.
No, what we hoped you had listened to is to bring the density down, and you didn't.
We went from forty-two to thirty-two.
No, we never agreed to forty-two, that's the point. You didn't, twenty-six is where we, we had stopped.
I guess I wouldn't understand it. This is thirty, why wouldn't.
Go back to the original plan, hold on, go back to that one.
This one is forty-two. Forty plus two A and Rs, forty-two lots. This is thirty-two.
And we had talked about.
That's a reduction of ten.
Twenty-six. No, we had never given you the bonus density. You're asking for the bonus density, and you're still building the A and Rs. Not two lots. That forty-two had how many bonus lots on it?
This one here.
That one.
Had ten, um, this one here had thirteen bonus lots.
Thirteen bonus lots, and we weren't going to get, we told you right up front, we weren't giving you the thirteen bonus lots.
So this one here has two.
We're down to thirty-two, and what, what I'm suggesting is, is you're down to, would bring you down to twenty-nine or twenty-eight if you couldn't build on that. And, and I, I could live with that. Because that gives the wildlife a great corridor across the way.
I guess the, I thought the bonus was to allow you to do a cluster that made sense.
No, you get a bonus if you leave the, if you leave the A and R lots as they are, as open space, not by still building them.
So I guess I ask Paul, see, can't we do this plan here, under chapter forty-one?
No, we have the option to tell you which way to go.
See, clusters, clusters only is not just for eye candy. It's, it's to include, it's to take everything into account, including the ecological balance of nature.
But we don't even, I mean, you say that, but we haven't even done a study to determine where the wildlife are.
All you have to do is ask a few of the neighbors like I have.
We've got a dozen of my backyard.
All right, hit, maybe.
We haven't even addressed the topography issues out there. We're trying to get them a number first, and then we'll work with you. We'll work with you, just like we did, we'd like this development to be as nice as what was done at Cobb Meadow. We gave them bonuses for smaller A and R lots, as long as they left it in, the rest of it is open space, we could do that. We need to come to a meeting, otherwise that twenty-six is maybe a good number out there, and we'll work with you.
I don't know where you got twenty-six from, because I know that I talked to Savos, and he personally told me thirty to thirty-two, which works with his numbers. And I'm telling you, this plan, thirty-one absolutely works, thirty-two is off by two hundred gallons, if you apply his, but his isn't even applicable.
We haven't even talked about topography up there.
This plan meets the topography, that's why, of course it does, that's why I didn't put units here and here.
What about the shared driveways up there? You're going to be at less than ten percent up there.
Yeah, that's why they're here.
No, it's still too dense, it's still thirty-two lots, it's too many lots. Get rid of the, get rid of the four ARs over there.
On the right, on Sanderson. I don't know what to say.
I, I.
That's twenty-eight.
I just find this awkward, that we went, at the last meeting, nobody said twenty-six.
We all talked about.
No, no, run the ten.
We talked about, we talked, when Savos did the numbers and said twenty-six was the number.
No, he didn't.
Paul did, Mark.
No, I, you know, I, I don't know what to say. This, this plan reflects, in terms of numbers, the conversation we had at the last meeting. If there's a concern regarding the way it's been configured, and, and the amount of protection that's being provided to the property, and you want to extend the conservation restriction area into some of the A and R lots, or do something else to make the A and R lot smaller, or something like that, or, or work with the plan, that's wonderful. But to, but to all of a sudden say that we could have, with our cluster plan, we can have fewer lots than we can in our conventional plan, it's a non-starter. I don't know where that comes from.
Yeah, wait, wait, yeah, we're just reading bylaw. It says right here in section B. So we will give you, it says, it says, we will potentially give you a bonus, provided that you do not develop the A and R lots on scenic roadways. It says, it says, it says as an offset, so if you take eight off the frontage, presumably we would give you eight more in there.
And that, and we came in with that plan a week ago.
And we rejected, nobody liked it.
You didn't want this. This was, this was fifteen bonus lots we were using thirteen.
No, I'm trying to walk through, because, because.
So now I've come back with a plan that said, all right, essentially more bonus lots.
He's down to thirty-two, but thirty-two's still too much. Based on what?
Don't feel, don't feel bad that you came back tonight, and it, and it's not acceptable to us.
Whoa, 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 stop. Who said it wasn't acceptable?
I don't like it.
There's five people sitting here.
I have concerns too.
Acceptable to me.
All right, so that's your vote?
Yes.
It's too, it's too dense, I don't like it.
But I guess what I'm saying, sir, you're reading the regulations, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we come back with this plan, not go onto the open space, not want to zone it?
Because we don't want a conventional plan, and we want an open space plan.
But we've already been down this road. If you reject the open space, he has the right to go.
We're not rejecting it, we're telling him we want less lots.
What's the difference?
Exactly. We're not approving the conventional, we're rejecting your open space, it's too dense.
We've already been down this road with Omni, he can force you to make a decision, and then he gets the conventional.
No, not necessarily.
That's a kid.
I'm asking him for less lots.
This is, but this is thirty, and this is thirty-two.
The difference between you asking him and you telling him, we're not going to accept that.
You're saying you want to go to thirty?
All right, so wait a minute, please.
This, this is thirty.
Just a second, please.
Oh, sure, sorry.
It's not, you know, your purview to say, we are not accepting this. You can say, I don't like it.
Right.
And then panel the board to see how we feel about it. We can ask the people out here how they feel about it, and we can read what the bylaw says. And then, from there, there's only two paths to go, you know, the one less travel, the other. So the thirty-two isn't a bad number. Originally, you could put forty-two in under the conventional, is that correct?
The original conventional was, it was thirty-two.
So we're right at the convention.
And we're back at it again, but you shifted things over, over to the other side like the other one. So we have a little more open space. Now, as far as Richie was concerned, shift a couple from here over to there, so you're doing less work, less driveways, that's not a bad idea up in the left-hand corner.
That's this.
The right-hand side underneath where Sanderson's home is now, the four on the main, I don't, I can't see that far.
Yeah, see any room.
Those ones there. If you could shift, maybe shift two of them one way and two the other way, stay out of the wetlands, have the corridor in both directions, it wouldn't be bad, you'd still have your thirty-two or thirty-one in that general vicinity.
I think basically you're saying to make these part of the cluster lots, but smaller lots.
Shrink them over some ways, you have more frontage or whatever, stay away from the, the gully for the, for that. I mean, just, I think if we shrunk a couple of lots and gave some people, you know, gave the animals more rooms, have more sites through, you got what you want, we get what we want, and it'll be sociable to everybody. And again, I think that public should be said, but the, the neighbors, you know, their, their words carry meaning, but again, we're stuck by what the law allows us to do.
We can do things like that. If you, if you want us to shrink the lots, make those A and R lots part of the open space special permit, so they can be reduced area, they don't have to be the full A and R lot size.
Correct.
Protect portions of it, the conservation restriction, install trails, those are things we can do inside the open space special permit.
Okay, now, in the same instance, whoever's, you know, being a trustee of, of, you know, a manager of a trust, you have a fiduciary responsibility to the trust. I understand that. And these people that own this, and again, they've been paying for this land for decades or years.
Hundred years.
All right, all of that, they have the right.
To make a buy.
The benefit to that, to that land. And for us to sit there and tell them no, I mean, knocking ten lots off it, that's, that's at a hundred dollars, a hundred thousand.
They didn't have twenty.
Well, just regardless, if they had it, and if they didn't have it.
They didn't have it.
What are you saying they didn't have?
They had thirty-two lots, it's all.
Every lot you knock off, and off it adds a hundred thousand dollars.
That's what that's meant right now, thirty-two lots, it's exactly the same. He's trying to say they had forty.
So what, so, ooh, what, what's the problem with thirty-two lots if we're getting more open space out of them?
We're not.
I don't understand your logic. Why aren't we getting more open space out of them?
I don't, I don't think it's a good open space plan, but you know what, we've talked enough, let's let the residents.
Well, I'd like to say something too. Yeah, I have some concerns, I've looked at a lot, and, you know, people spend a lot of time with Alan, who's now deceased, trying to protect that, and David's brother, and I know there's, then there's the Oak Hill, possibly the relatives. I, I look at this as being a scenic area, and in particular, the Sanderson Road area, very narrow road, no utilities, farm fields for three hundred years, both sides. I would think those four lots on those fields on the Sanderson Road should probably be eliminated, and maybe protect that for, for some farming. There are some four groups interested in some of the farming land that's going to be available to guard at Church Meadows. So, yeah, there would be interest in, in that. Looking Oak Hill Road, yeah, there's quite a bit there, there's some strange configurations. Lot three B, which is the L-shaped lot, could probably be knocked out, and that would, would help. I know other people have talked about where the green corridors maybe widen with one of those lots out. That would open up some, that would preserve some more of the open space. Yeah, you, you're going to need special permits along the scenic roads, and you'll need four votes for that. And that's on Oak Hill Road, especially Sanderson Road, which is very narrow, no utilities on it right now, no electric lines, there'd be quite impact there, it's lightly traveled. And the, the wetlands, you know, do come into those four A and R lots. I, I would think that, that would be a concern by the A and R. You follow the escare, the green part up to the left, there is a kell hole there which cuts in a little bit into A nine, which is sort of a funny house lot, because it has a septic system way far away, you have to pump to there. If that got moved out, you could shift over.
We're on the end of the same.
Eight and A seven a little bit. You see where A nine is?
Right by your elbow.
Here?
No.
No, A, letter A, A nine. And see where, if that got knocked out, and you could shift over eight, eight, Nate seven, you wouldn't need the septic system.
I can't shift, because I have a, that you.
Oh, you need, have the AT&T, yeah.
So you're saying to lose these four, and lose that, that's negative five.
Yeah.
I can't put them back anywhere.
That's, that's okay.
Right.
So now we're at, see, twenty-seven.
But see, under my plan, you could put two of them back. Under my suggestion, you could put two of them back.
Well, and that's why I was going to who the owners were.
Yeah, but you're building sixteen hundred feet of road, so it's the same.
The cluster there, but, but you're leaving that whole corridor open, and this whole corridor, thirteen, and these four, and that whole corridor remains intact. Where's the other one where you showed the, the cluster up in the left-hand corners? I'm looking at it. See how you did that one there? That cluster up there? How many there, there's eight there now.
But there's a lot of road.
But you only had four originally, right? Back here on this one?
We have six here. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Oh, that's a here we had one.
Two, two other.
Might be different, different clusters.
So we steal two from over there, and put them back over to that other one, flip it around. These, these eight replace that cluster, one cluster, same thing.
Eight animal.
And then we lose.
Yeah, that's right.
Then, then you end up with a. And then get rid of that one, and where this five are.
Couple of things. Number one, we, we, I didn't get a chance to talk about the septic here. We don't have any common septic, so we don't have the issue with the road crossing.
Right.
This one has a common septic, so we have the issue back with the road crossing again. So.
You're limiting the septic.
There's a lot less risk for the builder in the second plan than there is in the first plan, he just has to go to town and get across.
Well, that's less impact to the town.
The town hasn't decided whether they're going to go for.
I guess where, where our side is coming from is, we, we've got a plan that makes perfect sense, but it doesn't save any open space. But from the builder's developer's side, it makes a lot of sense financially.
No, I know, you get nothing out of that plan.
And it's less roadway, it's less, nobody gets anything except for the builder. So why we never really did that?
How many lots are on that one?
There's thirty.
And there's a couple of the lots in there that won't pass our testing.
Well, I'm telling you right now, these are all going to pass.
You don't have it to use on any, ours on any of them.
They do too. Ours, point five-seven on three B, it says it on the other sheet.
Well, that's on the new one, not on the old one.
No, no, he did the ours on the.
The ours, point four-seven on this, and point four-two on that. So they do meet the R factors, I've already checked it.
All right, let's let people in the audience speak first, okay? Ma'am, name, Maran.
Pam Peterson, one fifteen, Wickham Ave. I'm just curious, you keep saying that all this is going to pass for the A and R lots, has that land been perked?
It's very, very sandy material. As far as percolation, there's no issues whatsoever.
There's been no per testing done?
Oh my God, yeah, we've done all kinds of testing. Tested all these lots right here, all the way across the year. These have been tested.
So not specific locations, but in general, you've scoped out the land?
It's a sandy hill, we know that. Absolutely, no doubt about it.
So not specific lots as a A and R plan?
I just said these, all these have been tested.
Yes, but I'm talking about the plan that doesn't have the cluster, that has all the A and R.
This one here. I have, you're right. If we did the conventional plan, we'd have to do all these tests.
So it's not necessarily a given that all those pass?
Absolutely true, but I'm telling you, I'm like nine, more than, I'm ninety-nine and a half percent sure they're all gonna pass. They're, it's a sandhill. As far as percolation goes. I mean, you're smiling, I know the land, I've been on it.
Well, I just, you know, no offense, but I know your position on it. When you talk about the cluster neighborhood, where you take that down and you show the small cluster, you now, instead of having a shared septic, have all of these individual septics. And I find it hard to believe that all of those septics are gonna pass in that area.
My responsibility is my client on that. I'm not worried at all. We, we were gonna schedule testing, we were starting on Thursday. We, we gave it up because I don't know where to test.
I know there's been some testing back there. We've seen tractors back there and people walking the land, so obviously people are in there doing things and have some idea. I'm just.
There's also soil mapping, and escar means sand, that's where it is. We've done testing everywhere. George has been out here, he's, it says this is all hundred percent beautiful sand. I know it's all sand through here. These lots are sandy. What I haven't tested is right here. But I can see by the ground form, the vegetation, and the soils maps that were done by the SES service, it's all sand. It's all the same thing. Intinctually, it looks like sands, it's beautiful sands.
Yes, ma'am. Either one.
I'm Kathy Zimmerman. I live in the lot at the very corner of Sanderson and Wickham. And I would like to, yeah, start by saying George and Pam are our dear friends, and they'll always be our friends. I would be very much in favor of Richard Crowley's plan, and, can you put that, oh, this one, yeah, I'm looking at. And he's absolutely right. I mean, I watch the animals daily walk across those four that are on Sanderson. If, if you could reconfigure such that those go away, and maybe the cluster up on Oak Hill makes a lot more sense. Because the animals daily deer cross, fox families have crossed, turtles cross. I mean, there's, I feel so lucky to live where there's so much wildlife. It's really tremendous. Not only for the aesthetic value, but all the kids that have grown up in that area have an appreciation that a lot of kids don't have for the importance of the natural world, which is, I think, hugely important because we live in it. But, and I also wanted to just say that when you're talking about that drainage ditch that comes from the pond, that's really a pond, and that may, it was a pond, it wasn't just a, a tunnel with a pool. And since I've been there twenty-some odd years, in high water, the water goes from that pond across that ditch, and it's even gone across the street, the property that's across the street. So that is very much a working, you know, waterway. But if you could figure out how to work Mr. Crowley's plan, that would make a, a lot more sense to me.
So that'd be some configuration up in the corner.
We keep bringing this up, it's a great idea, but it doesn't help you. There's only eight lots here. They all have a common septic system. There's four lots over there. And there's eight lots here, so I don't, the numbers aren't adding up.
The eight replaces the eight.
Okay, so then.
And that opens up the corridor on the north.
So wait a minute, so you, you started out with forty-two, right?
No, 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 we never.
No, 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 just go.
This plan had forty-two, correct.
So if you knock out, if you knock out B?
Z takes it to thirty-four.
She knock out B?
Thirty, thirty-six.
Thirty-six, but we really wanna get to thirty-two, right?
And then you take the upper, the four A and Rs up by the, on Oak Hill?
All right, so let's go back to the beginning of the bylaw, right? And let's go back to the.
No, let's just keep going.
You're gonna get to a number.
That's what I've been saying from the get-go, but let's listen to the residents first. Go ahead, ma'am, that I meant to call.
Diane Douglas, sixty, Sanderson. That culvert that comes off of the, is it a pond or a wetland?
It's a wetland.
It's a wetland?
We just got the.
It's three quarters of the yard is pond, yes. And so it's very fine drained, the aquifer, the water table has lessened, so it's not water all the time. But it's, it's, it's an active water.
I'm downstream, especially back at two-ten, when the wetland overflowed and all the houses, including mine, and the two on Wickham, where the culvert though, were eight inches underwater. Our concerns about the septic and these holding tanks and any construction, how is that gonna impact the culvert? Is the stormwater gonna get into the wetland? What will you be providing? Will the culvert go up as the easement across our property be cleaned out? So if there are any issues, is it glassing, is it shifting things? I'd just like someone to talk to us about that, if it hasn't been discussed already.
Sure, there are no, there are no holding tanks.
What's that?
Are you gonna clear cropping that, that subdivision?
What is clear cropping?
Cutting the, all the trees down?
There'll be trees cut, of course. Wherever the, basically where there's light green, there's trees to be cut on this one here. Wherever there's gray, they could cut whatever they want.
What it impacts to the, the dirt and everything there, that all those roots are holding everything? I don't understand the top of the other feet, I just know they're downhill.
If we get past this discussion, I was gonna also recommend, in our, in our conditions, that there be no cut zones along the driveway, along the house, fifty feet around the house, fifty feet from the center of the driveways, so that most of the sites remain natural. But we have to get past this, this.
In this plan here, the lots, fifty feet around all the houses, the entire lot, these are tiny lots.
Yeah.
So what are you saying? Certainly, you couldn't save the trees around the.
I was just saying, Richard, they're all going.
I don't understand. This right here, I have a septic field, a house, a driveway, and that's the lot.
Those are all small lots.
They're very small lots, that's what an open space is.
Then I could go along with that.
Yes, sir.
And Neil Peterson, one nineteen, Wickham Avenue. We live right in the corner where we give, all the way over. Peterson, one, two more, one more over, right there. This cluster plan I saw before, there was a, there was some open space between the borders of all the property. My assumption now, by where the septics are, it'll be clear cut all the way up to the property line, so it'll have to be. So I mean, you're really gonna change the dynamics of the neighborhood there, and I would request that somehow a buffer be put back in to allow, you know, the wildlife. I mean, we have during the winter, I see at least a dozen set of eyes when I try and flashlights back from the woods, so.
You're not allowed to do that.
You told me to do that. So, so you lost that when you did the plan. I mean, I know you're, there's someone's gonna build there, it's their right to, and we respect that, but, you know, but that can be looked at. The other thing is, so I see the runoff pools there. There's one right on our neighbor's house, and those, you got kids all over the place, so, you know, those are gonna be just big, maybe ponds that are gonna develop there from the waterside.
Not, not water. They'll be, they're detention basins. You see them all over, every project has them. They're, they're not, if anything, they're this deep, and they never, they don't have water permanently. Otherwise, they'd be mosquito pits.
No, that's what I, we're mostly about, throwing the yard a lot. So, but I'd like someone to mention about the clear cuts, because Yama built our house, and I can give you all his houses on Old Orchard and along Wickham. He did a great job of keeping trees along the driveway. And you mentioned that some of the recent houses that have been built, it's been basically mostly clear cut, other than a couple of trees along the border. And I'm just worried about what it's gonna cause, you know, with our evaporation, what's gonna happen to all the runoff water. You know, it's gonna end up, Wickham floods all the time already. Down our, we get two or three inches of water that's based on our driveway after the house next door went in, so I assume it'll just be a continuation of that, so. Any type of restrictions could be put on.
Those are all, those are all good points. This is such an ecologically sensitive area that we, we need to.
We got spotted salamanders around my pool all the time. I mean, I assume this is gonna impact.
Your pool?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Bill Brown, I'm at Seven Old Orchard Lane, and I'm a Oak Hill land steward. I thought, I think that Mr. Brem has done a great job of incorporating a lot, a lot of the comments from the last planning board meeting. We, you know, reduce the number of lots, we should make it work as far as the water department. You know, I'd like to see the calculation. But I think that thirty lots, thirty-two lots would work. The, there's no shared septic system, which is a big concern to people, even though there's no law against it, but people are concerned. If you went to that plan where you put the cluster back in the corner, in the upper corner, then you're back to a shared septic system under a town road, and you got the concern that the highway department has about that, we've never done in Milton. I think they've got, in this plan, it's better wildlife corridors. Next to eighty-nine, Wickham, there's that nice corridor coming in, you got the corridors off of Sanderson coming through. The one, the one going up to Oak Hill could be wider. I would think that it's, it's there. And it still preserves the glacial escar and the kettle. So, I mean, I see Neil's point where it did lose the buffer along the property line and back over, I mean, yeah, back Old Orchard Lane. I don't know if that whole thing can shift over a little bit, to get that back. But I think, I think the thing is, you've gotta realize they're gonna develop this one way or another, and it, I'm not the lawyer, but I think eventually we could go back to that other plan. I think that's, that's a real loser for everybody if we go to that conventional plan versus one of these open space plans. And this one's a lot better than the last one. Maybe it could be knocked down a few more. But at some point, they'll say, hey, it's not viable.
I think that was a great observation. Go ahead.
Craig Johnson, eighty-six, Oak Hill. I just wanna point out, along Oak Hill Road, I mean, I believe that's a scenic byway.
Scenic route.
Uh, scenic. You know, we've already seen the development that's been going on in the first four, somewhere between two and four properties that are on Oak Hill. And, I mean, it's taken out the woods right up to the curb. And, you know, mostly, there's still a few trees here and there, but this is not looking good. If I see, you know, that, that's really going against being a scenic way, and, and kills the way that Oak Hill Road really looks right now. Many of us who live on Oak Hill Road, I guess there's not many of us, overall, we, we like the way the road looks. I mean, it's, it's scenic. The buffer that's in here, I think, you know, I, I personally would like to see that improvement on. I think that this plan is an improvement over the last one. Hard not to be. I think it could be better. I think many of the points you guys have already raised, I'm with. But I would like to see, you know, more buffer between the Oak Hill Road and, and the properties.
Where's your house at?
It's twenty-six, it's just passed.
I drove up the other day, what, what house is yours? What color is it?
And specifically, what are you referring to?
The strip on the foot.
You're talking about knocking out seven B or six B, the border, that narrow strip going up to, that vertical green strip to the top. Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about along the road itself.
Putting in a border along the road.
Yeah.
Having that, so it doesn't.
You want a bigger border.
Yeah, it should be thicker. I mean.
More, more setback of vegetation?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
How about this?
I want to just preserve the way it looks.
In your conventional, you have seventeen lots that come in out the shared roadway, right? Seventeen lots in there.
On the new roadway, yes.
How about if you go back to the next one? Okay, go back to, take two lots out of that one, leave it at seventeen. And then what we'll do is, we'll, we'll give you relief from the square footage for, for the A and R lots, try to squeeze them together to give more green space, and so now we're down at thirty. How's that for a compromise?
And what about the four lots on Sanderson Road?
Smut, we'll squeeze those down smaller. We'll give them twenty thousand square foot lots there to give more open space there.
But there may be interest, people would even.
It'd be nice if they were, if they went away.
It'd be nice if they weren't there, but that means we're gonna give some more lots somewhere else.
Right.
Thanks. As you know, I can't squeeze them anymore. It looks like I have areas here, but I really.
No, no, not in there, maybe. We'll give you something. We'll give you something. I'm trying to come up with a number that would come out.
I like, all right, the thought process is excellent. So we're, you're saying, take this number to seventeen? What's this now, Jeff?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. So knocking out A nine might be helpful.
Mark, why don't, why don't they leave that at nineteen and knock off?
Why don't you like A nine? What's wrong with that?
I, because it is.
And knock off thirteen B and twelve B. Well, I'm just, first trying to understand Mark's suggestion.
I'm trying to get the lots down to thirty.
And then you're saying, take these lots to twenty thousand square feet?
Are you gonna fill in the wetland?
No, no, you can't fill in the wetlands.
No, well, no, they'll be caught under most circumstances.
It's just a lot.
Just make the water run faster.
How about this? If you wanna leave those two in there, take two of the A and Rs, and we'll give you a smaller A and R. As long as we get down to thirty, okay? How about thirty? Is that a?
Thirteen B and twelve B, Mark, because they're, they're on the southern side.
And then shrink, we'll shrink the lots so we have a bigger green space.
B and twelve B. And did you have any comment regarding these?
We'll give you, we'll make them smaller if you want them smaller, A and R lots, to give more green space up there. I don't think you can shift them over anymore. You're not gonna get a bigger green space going out.
The goal is to get additional green space on the, on Oak Hill Road or back here?
Oak Hill Road.
Oak Hill Road, but I don't, no, I don't.
That's getting pretty.
You know, you could do, you could take one of that A and R there and move it behind the other one. How, could you do that?
It's hard to have a lot behind each other, you know that.
Which, which one are you talking about?
The one right next to the little green.
The one that one over here.
You're talking about six B?
No, I want it to the other way. Can you put it the other way, behind that one?
This one?
No, behind the other one. No, keep going the other way.
This one?
Right, behind that one. And you put the shed driveway there, leave a wide green space.
Mark, the.
So move seven B over.
The cluster in the corner, even though we have to go into the road with the, with the sewer systems, that's a small trade-off to end, that's a small trade-off to end up with so much more green space. The trade-off might be that we're stuck with a private way, and we have to sell these lots to homeowners where they'll have to maintain the roadway in perpetuity. An additional expense to them. In this, in this market, people aren't interested in additional expenses because it goes into what the lenders will consider as part of their monthly mortgage payment. And if they see the number that's gonna increase over time.
I can do a common driveway and face everything this way.
Right, we'll give you smaller A and R lots, you give us more green space, but we'll leave it at thirty lots.
Seven and eight B, I'm gonna combine into a common driveway, go in the opposite direction.
So you're gonna bigger green space there.
Okay, so nicer corridor going out.
And same thing with, you're gonna take two of those lots out and put them, leave the nineteen in the cluster.
Are these the two you wanna?
Yes.
Those two?
Well, except earlier, Mark said take them out of the loop.
No, but now they want more green space, so we'll leave them in the loop and put more green space.
Leave them in here, but take these two out, that'll bring really greenness. Help Mrs. Zimmerman out.
As resident of eighty-nine.
Go ahead, now everybody raises their hand. Go ahead.
I live in Lee River Brook Road, and I'm on the conservation trust, but I, I think we should get back to removing the four lots on Sanderson Road. The reason being that they are, it is a field at the moment, and I would love to be able to preserve the farm as a farm. Taking away farmland, I think is a mistake here. I think the value will go back to the farm in the long run.
Maybe they.
So where's your offset?
So I'm not, I'm just saying, if you'd, for me, I really appreciate what they've done there. I would just take those four out and let them go with it.
You don't have to put your tellings.
With what he's given us here.
We take far away from them, we gotta give them four back.
Why don't you do this, Jeff? Why don't, why don't you leave it at thirty, and try to figure how you can fit the, the other two in? And take those four.
The ones on Sanderson Road, the far two to the right that are closer to the, the homestead, take those two, and you give, out of the last two that are left, yes. Take those two out, take the other two and split them, so you get four into those two. And then up above on Oak Hill, at the start of the, the Sanderson's place where the little dog leg is, because you're gonna cheat those two that way. Yeah, you're gonna swap those. And then what about those ones over there? Swap those going the other way also.
Do you see?
No, I'm sorry, to your right, way to your right. Looks like, looks like the, the other cow.
Well, those are done.
Oh.
Those are done.
All those are already gone.
You see the cow too?
Yeah.
You see the cow? Thirteen B and twelve B, right with, right with all the, all the.
Well, you got an idea going for what we just discussed?
Thirteen and twelve B are.
I don't know, we've got, we've got, I think, two diff, two or three different ideas, because we wanna make sure that we don't do this again.
I think, give us.
We're gonna give it a twelve B and thirteen B if we do that, and I squeeze these over a little bit more, and make them smaller lots.
Okay.
I could increase this field and get, let's say, half of the field, so that you won't lose the whole field, but you'll have about half the field that's there.
That would be one of the deals where, when, if Sanderson sells the main homestead, that stays in one piece.
Actually, there's been emails back and forth, and Paul knows more about it. They, they wanna have the right to continue to, to cut that and, and graze and so forth.
Still protected by a conservation restriction, but the fee interest may retain with that, with the house lot. But it'd still be protected by a conservation restriction, so it's six of one.
Could the developed rights go away and also?
Correct.
The, the house lot can still maintain the field and so forth, so you get what you see.
All right, so, so we'll work with you on the size of the A and Rs.
So these A and Rs get smaller, these two get smaller, these stay the same, generally, these two disappear.
Go away.
Yep. How's that?
How about the Oak Hill, the.
And then Oak Hill, all right.
The little buffer there.
Oh, the, the Oak Hill Road, depth of buffer, can that be increased, Jeff?
I don't see how.
I'd be happy with that if you're gonna get a small lot. Well, I could cheat.
Upper left.
No, upper left.
He's thinking to see if you can find another lot there.
The strip along Oak Hill. No. Oh, yeah, I could increase that. I mean, it's thirty feet. I think thirty feet is plenty. You're gonna keep thirty feet of trees that you don't touch is a lot.
And the land goes down, so.
And it goes down pretty steep. So, I mean, right here I certainly can, and over here I can too. The, the lots will go back. I could comment that.
So just, just a couple of questions, but, you know, along what Neil said, so Greg has one seventeen, Wickham. You know, so the line of trees, I think to, you know, as Rich suggested, just to preserve a buffer, I think is a great idea.
I'm trying, right here is what you're talking about, right?
But also along the backside of Wickham, you know, where those houses are. And I, and my other question was, why with this plan, you know, there's more stormwater management areas than the previous plan. I'm just curious why that is, because there's less roads and.
Good, good call on that.
Yeah, and then, and then, you know, and then I guess my other point, you mentioned that those, those are only temporary, you know, I guess, water holding.
Yeah, basically, they're just gigantic bathtubs. If you imagine you're draining your bathtub is slightly clogged, you pour the water in and it fills up, you stop the water, slowly it'll go away. That's all these things are. And their intent is to, so that the drainage, back to the comments earlier, the downstream, you don't get an impact. Basically, you hold back all the impact. Wetlands do that naturally. That's what, one of the major features of wetlands. We're doing, we're creating these things. So sometimes you see these things and they grow wetland plants because just like wetlands, the water goes in and it leaves, and you get cattails that grow. It's helpful that these will have cattails because it's so seamy.
But how will the engineer will be like a stone pick, and I think that's also.
They're basically, they're just two or three foot high. You see them everywhere, you just maybe don't recognize them. As you're driving around, look for them. But they're just basically depressions in the land. And like I said, sometimes people mow them, sometimes they grow cattails, sometimes there, there's a couple in Westford that are growing trees in them, so depends on how they're managing. But that's their purpose. I do have some more, I'm saying on a roadway. If you look at the other configuration roadway, I had a lot of room in the middle here that I was using for detention. I don't know if I need all those, both of those.
I mean, is it possible, I guess, to remove those, especially with, but trees or?
No, I, I have to have, all this water comes in, half of the road goes this way, half of it goes this way. I have a problem already with this portion of the roadway. I haven't solved yet. I have to work with the public works department on how I'm gonna deal with that, if that's what these green areas are, I may have to do some underground systems. But I'll need something for this half of the road. Maybe not as much, it's not that much roadway. But the reason why I do a double is because they get a lot of efficiency when you go from one base to another.
But I would, I would just, you know, just, I guess, to be, if we get a very big.
How are you gonna do that?
Tree go.
Yeah, tree go.
Cut the escar down.
Couldn't you eliminate some in the middle there? All the houses in there, so you could squeeze the road...
That's what I was just saying, maybe move A sixteen over, maybe move A fifteen over.
Bring that curb in or try to open that up.
Like I said, twenty feet of trees is a lot, it doesn't look like much in a plan, but it's a lot in real life. Twenty feet from here to the wall, if that was all tree, it's a huge amount. When you look at a plan, it doesn't look that much, so you do need to remember that. An acre of land is a lot. Right now, I'm looking at nothing.
Yes, ma'am, one more question.
I see a lot of trucks that are not supposed to be on Sanderson Road, and I've seen a lot more lately. I have a berm put up at my driveway because the road is a nest. So is it a traffic study? Because I can see everybody cutting off one ten to Sanderson, that is not a very wide road.
It's a country road.
It's a country road.
It doesn't need a, it doesn't need a traffic study.
Well, if you give more houses there, you're going to have electric lines going, all sorts of things going in there, and it's going to get wider, that's my concern. I have more concerns about the Sanderson Road, and if George wants to be able to do agriculture, why not just take away the development rights, let him lease it, let him do wherever, you know, it should stay in agriculture, it's been there for three hundred years. It's very similar to what's across the way, which is currently in agriculture. There are like four different groups looking for places to do agriculture, you could make money off.
Across the way is also the same, Sanderson family.
Yes, right.
It's leased to a CSA, all...
Would your client at least be amenable discussing those, getting rid of those four lots on Sanderson?
Yeah, I think...
Getting rid of all four lots? I thought we had a better idea.
No, I'm not saying that's a...
Get rid of the development rights.
I'm not asking you to say that we would reject the plan, because, I'm just asking you to take the input you've heard here tonight and ask your client to consider it, if he says no, that's fine.
No, the, the input in the last fifteen minutes has been very productive and helpful.
So thirty lots, but what we're trying to say, what he's trying to say is, thirty lots, can we figure a way to get rid, get rid of those four A and Rs? And we can still, we still have time.
Well, it's really five, because you've got this one here, one, two, three, four, five.
I think we could live with the fifth one coming back if we got rid of the other four.
Right, the four on Anderson, if you can get rid of the development rights, you know, no houses built, keep those fields, lease them out, use it for agriculture, rent it out to someone, wherever.
But that's part of the, that's part of the migratory passage.
Well, but they have the wetland areas to go through, and they have a green corridor to the left, and they have this wetland area where most wildlife is around.
I think, we're almost there, I think, I agree with you.
Thirteen B have to go.
Let's, let, let's, Jeff, Jeff, take a look at it, see what he can do, he's, he's got his marching motors, now we have to decide. So can we send them off saying that we'd like them to do the open space plan based on thirty lots, we'll talk, we'll, we'll work with them on smaller A and R lots to, for more green space, and we can agree to come back in months, six weeks, whatever time you need, to work on an open space plan?
I'm good with that.
Everybody's happy with it.
We're interested in the open space plan, there are some differences, but we're getting closer.
We're getting closer.
I see that.
And also, we talked about the possibility of a walk, I'd like to have the walk of us out there.
We should have a walk out there, actually.
I mean, we need to get the seat.
Quickly, before snows.
Okay, do you want to be on?
Can we ride four wheels and sort of walk? Yeah, we could whip this up. These, these plans at this stage are easy to fix.
So we have the twelve, in December, December twelve, when do you want to do a sidewalk? Let's schedule a sidewalk right now.
Okay, you'd need an extension from them, because right now you're deadline to file a decision in the preliminary, it would be the seventh.
If we're moving our meeting, that's...
To the twelve, can you give us an extension to the twelve? Okay, we have a sidewalk, we might as well...
On the sidewalk, I've never done this before, but you're going to have a quorum, you're going to post it?
Yeah.
You could make a decision then too, as well.
I think we'd rather do it.
That's true.
Right, and that's not advised.
Find everybody available, you want to do it on Saturday, this Saturday or next Saturday?
I'm away starting Saturday to next, I'll be back Saturday morning through a red eye, I'll be tired, but...
Where you go?
I'm teaching Saturdays.
This Saturday or next Saturday?
I'll be on this Saturday, exactly.
Next Saturday's a Saturday after Thanksgiving.
I won't be here Saturday after Thanksgiving. How about, first...
First Saturday in December?
First Saturday in December, what's that?
It's a seven.
Seven.
Seven, why don't we do that?
Saturday, no, not doing it. Saturday's off limits.
Can you go by yourself during the week?